We're getting started. All right, good evening, everyone. This is the work session of the ASIO board. It's being conducted at the ASIO Area Learning Center in Park. Today is December 6, 2022. The work session is being audio recorded. The recording will be made available on the district website because it's going to be four hours after the work session has ended. The purpose of the work session is to build trust and teamwork, exchange information, and be applicable to provide direction in order to facilitate efficient and effective decision-making at regular board meetings and outcomes of the work session. Our board members will receive information and updates on the legislative platform, monitoring reports, strategic corrections, key initiatives, and involvement, as well as a board calendar review. To acknowledge attendance this evening, I'll send board members and cabinet members to the back row on the table, stating their names, and I'll start with.
Corey McIntyre, Superintendent.
Heather Diffler, School Board Member.
Brian Bass, Assistant Superintendent.
Valerie Dulson, ASIO lobbyist.
John Morsette, Executive Director, Finance and Operations.
Tanya Simons, School Board Member.
Tamara Grady, She/Her/Her, School Board Member.
Thomas Brooks, School Board Member.
Anthony Paredes, Executive Director of Technology.
Kevala, Community Relations Director.
Ryan Severson Hall, Executive Director of Community Engagement.
Laura Anderson, Executive Director of Human Resources.
Tim Palmetier, General Counsel.
Steve List, Assistant Superintendent for the Elementary Schools.
Jackie Mosketa Jones, School Board Member.
Kelsey Bassin-Monton, School Board Member.
Well, a couple of things before we get started tonight. Kristin Howie, Principal here at OALC and 279 Online wishes she could be here but had another conflict, but did provide lots of great swag for the board members here. If there's other t-shirts, if anyone wants to do some shopping. So we're very appreciative of not only Kristin but the OALC staff for allowing us to be here. And as you can see, we're trying to rotate through some buildings. We don't always get to all that often, so it's nice to be here tonight. And we had our policy committee meeting earlier tonight, too, and it was night time. Kristin was here to welcome myself. Appreciate that very much. So tonight, we have three agenda items scheduled. First, from 6:05 or so to about 6:35, so about 30 minutes, we're going to review the draft legislative platform. And tonight, we have, as you see, Valerie Dulson here to be while consulting and make it good traveling to be with us tonight, along with John Morsette, who will help us walk through the draft legislative platform in the hopes of bringing that forward to the course of action next week at our regular meeting. From 6:35 to 7:35, for about an hour, we're going to receive our second-ever monitoring report. So this will be for monitoring report D and those initiatives. And Brian Bass, Assistant Superintendent of Equity and Achievement, along with his team of Robin Gonzalez, Tom Watkins, a co-author, are here to help us with the data this evening once again. So you become regulars here all of a sudden. And thank you very much for your extra efforts as we continue to learn on implementing our strategic plan. Lastly, we'll have from about 7:35 to 8:20, if I can do my job and try to keep this on time, we'll receive an enrollment update from John Morsette. And then at 8:20 or near the end, we'll have a quickly review of our updated one-year board calendar. So with that, we'll jump right in, and I'll turn it over to John. Are you going to start things off with Valerie? And thank you both for getting us started.
Thank you, Superintendent McIntyre. So what we're going to do with the legislative platform is just kind of start by walking through just an update of what to expect with the upcoming session. Valerie will walk us through, and then I'll go through the actual draft platform, and we can take comments and feedback from that. So I'll turn it over to Valerie to get started.
Great, thank you. And thanks, everyone, for having me. The 2023 Legislative Session begins on January 3rd, so it's just a few weeks away. The dust is still settling from the November election. As you know, there's now a DFL trifecta with Governor Walz winning reelection, the Senate flipping to Democrat control, and the House remaining in Democrat control. Although the Senate Democrats do have control now, it is a very slim majority. They have 34 members to 33 members for the Republican Caucus. In the House, their numbers didn't change, so there continues to be 70 Democrats to 64 Republicans, although the shift has changed where most of the members of the House Democratic Caucus come from the metro area. They lost some seats in greater Minnesota. I would say that the legislature, there's going to be a lot of new faces at the legislature this year. There was a large number of retirements last year. I think the number I heard was, with all of the retirements, 500 years of legislative experience and expertise has left the legislature. So there's a lot of new faces. 28% of the members are going to be new to the legislature. Just some interesting figures in the House, for the House, excuse me, in the Senate, for the Senate Democrats, a majority of the members are now women. The legislature is also getting increasingly diverse. We have, in the Senate, there are not only one, but three black women were elected to the Senate, and they are the first elected officials of color for the Senate, for the females. And then Senator Bobby Joe Champion was elected the President of the Senate, and he is the first person of color in that position. On the House side, they also continued, and in the Senate side, we also have our first Gen Z-er. So the Senate's getting a lot more diverse and younger, and I would say that's the same on the House side. In the House, in the Senate, they elected Senator Kerry Dietzick from Minneapolis to be the Majority Leader. And then they chose their committee chairs recently in the Committee for Education and Policy. They chose Senator Steve Squidzinski, who's from the Eden Prairie area, and then Senator Mary Kunisch, who is from the Columbia Heights-Fredley area. On the House side, they elected Melissa Hortman, who represents the ASIO Area Schools, as the Speaker of the House again. She has held that term for several years now. And then they elected Representative Jamie Long from Minneapolis as the Majority Leader, and then Representative Lisa Damif as the Minority Leader, and she is the first person of color in a leadership position in the House. So the next thing that happens in the, to let the dust, for the dust to settle at the legislature is the individual committees will, assignments will be made. The House and Senate, the House will not likely make their committee announcements until after December 15th. We may hear the Senate committee announcements later this week or early next week. So we don't yet know who's going to be sitting on the Education, Finance, or Policy Committees. On the House side for the committee structure, Representative Cheryl Yu-Akim, a DFLer from Hopkins, was chosen as the Education Finance Chair. Representative Lori Pryor from the Minnetonka area was chosen as the Education Policy Committee Chair. And then Representative Dave Pinto is Chair of a Early Childhood Committee that is now called the Children and Families Committee. The Senate does not have a similar Early Childhood Committee. I would say the big news that we were all waiting for today was the news of the budget forecast. MMB released the numbers this morning, and it showed that Minnesota has a $17.6 billion budget surplus. Of that amount, $12 billion is considered to be one-time, and $6 billion is considered to be ongoing. I think what's also interesting about the budget forecast is the forecast shows that income taxes and sales taxes are coming in higher than expected, and also, we've also had reduced spending, but not much reduced spending in the education area. But I think what's interesting about the forecast is a lot of us were wondering if it would, many of, much of it would be one-time, but now they believe that the forecast going into the out-years is going to be much more stable, and they predict an over $8 billion budget surplus in the out-years. So that was, I think, very good news for the things that the education community is going to be advocating for in the Capitol. The February forecast is what the forecast that the governor uses to determine his budget recommendations. So now the governor will start putting together his budget recommendations that will come out early in session, middle of session sometime. But one of the things that we have been hearing about over the last week, and we've heard about it with a lot of emphasis in the last few days, especially today, is that the new majority is very interested in putting inflation back into the forecast. Back when we had significant budget deficits, back in the mid-2000s, early to mid-2000s, they took the inflation out of the forecast. And I think we are likely to see maybe some fast action in the legislature to put the inflation back into the forecast. So that will show up in the February forecast, which is what the legislature and the governor will really use to determine their budget recommendations. With the DFL majorities now, some things that did not have legs in the last few years are likely to have legs. I think a couple of note-one of interest to school districts might be paid family leave. There's also a host of hot-button topic issues that could gain some traction as well. In regards to education funding, we've heard that the governor and the House and Senate continue to say that education is one of their highest priorities. And specifically, we've been hearing a lot about fully funding special ed. We've also heard a lot about providing universal free meals. I think you'll see across the board a lot of education organizations advocating, not surprisingly, for the per pupil formula. I think we'll also see a lot of what the governor had recommended last session regarding school counselors, student mental health, incentives to attract new teachers and teachers of color into the workforce as well. And I might, I would add that even though there is a DFL trifecta, does that, does not mean it's going to be a rubber stamp on what the governor might want or that they would always agree. But I do think the, the chance of what we saw last session where they went home without doing anything is extremely unlikely, and I certainly think having a significant budget surplus also helps that. But, you know, just because they are from the same party does not mean that they will all get along. Might, might get along a little bit more better than the last few years.
Okay. So what we'll do is, if you grab to the, or move to the next sheet, we'll take a look at what our legislative priorities have been identified as. There's just kind of a brief introduction, and then I'm moving right into the four yellow bullets and just kind of, kind of talk our way through them. So the first one is to provide stable predictable funding, the first category, starting with an increase in the general education formula by 5% each year and index the general education formula to, and local optional revenue to inflation. A number of note that I think is a good talking point to have when you're talking with legislators, so currently, we are, if we would have followed inflation, we're about $1,264 per pupil behind. For our school district, that is $28 million for the current year. So that's, that number went up from last year being about 15 to 20 million, up to 28, just on, on the inflationary push. So that is an enormous amount of money that we don't, that we've lost to inflation. The next item is linking the categorical funding to inflationary increases in the general education formula. So whatever the ed formula increases by, those categories that have been static would also increase by. Fully fund special education is a high priority. The most recent data we have is from fiscal year 2021, in which our school was $20.2 million underfunded in special ed, so that's our cross subsidy. That number went down because there was some one-time money put into it, but that's run out now. So going forward, unless the legislature takes action, that number would jump up. You'll see it jump up notably when we finally get 22 numbers, but that'll be after the legislation, our legislative session has already started. Fully funding the English Learner Program, which is the student group identified at ASIO with the largest achievement gap. Our current shortfall is 8.6 million dollars in that category. And then allow school boards to renew existing levies that have been approved by voters without additional elections. So this is just renewals. This is not an increase. So for example, what we just got passed were two increases. Those would still need to go to voters. If it was just renew what we have existing, that the authority for the school board would allow that to be approved on a school board vote. The next major category, enhance school safety and support, and support mental health, starts with increased safe schools funding to support mental health needs of scholars and staff, and then also expand the allowable uses of long-term facility maintenance funding to include modifications of buildings to enhance safety and security. The third category, support achievement gap closure, starting with expanding programs to, and incentives to attract and develop and retain teachers of color, remove barriers and provide incentives to address the shortages of teachers, school bus drivers, education service professionals, and other staff, replace the MCA exam with a nationally recognized college entrance exam, and support all students by providing universal free meals. The final category is broad. It's just basically reduce mandates. So we'd either ask that existing mandates be fully funded and to refrain from any additional new mandates. Some examples besides things like special education and English learner that are unfunded mandates are World's Best Workforce is a really big one as an example, us having to publish all of our minutes and budgets and all those things in the paper rather than be able to put them on a website and not spend money frivolously or unnecessarily. So things like that, and we'll, you know, as we move forward and if this is adopted, what we'll do is put together kind of a list of talking points of what are some of the specific mandates that can be addressed, and obviously, each department tends to have some that affect them more than others. As noted at the bottom, this platform aligns with many of the statewide education organizations, including AMSD, MSBA, MASAA, and MASBO. And with that, I will turn it back over for questions.
And maybe board members, you can see in the back, we did a little bit of rebranding on this. Kay, do you want to talk a little bit about the change in format and what we were thinking here?
So this is a one-pager. The back portion is really just a little bit more about our mission and who we are demographically as a school district, and then a little bit more, we mentioned strategic plan on the front page, so going into that a little bit more and what that means. Just so people are kind of understanding ASIO Area Schools in general and they're taking a look at this, and then just some connections that legislators can make in making sure to follow us on social media.
And maybe before any comments or questions, I just want to say thank you to board members and cabinet members who took the time and helped us do the survey and beginning to really gauge interest areas and help us kind of dial in the people where we have consensus on items. And oddly enough, like it says at the bottom, it's very tightly aligned, as Valerie has worked with us a few times, and many of us from other organizations, there's strength in the platforms when we can really have alignment and be talking about the same things. This is not everything we're, you know, we lobby for, but we really felt it important. It's concise, and it's a starting point for conversation. So there's other items that, you know, there's, Valerie, you always say there's items that come up during the session we can't even predict right now. So that happens, but this gives us a beginning point on what's important to us, and then being able to tell our story, what this means in ASIO Area Schools, what do these things look like, and what's the impact on us locally. But to get the conversation started, a one-pager is really where we were wanting to start from, and just some key pieces about who we are in the back. So I want to thank Kay and the others for putting this together. So sure, Dulson, want to facilitate comments or questions?
Could I add one point? I think it's important to mix in there. We're in, we've started the process of adding a Legislative Action Committee, whose job ultimately will be to produce this for us and help in that process, so we're getting a little bit more round view, including views from our community members on this. We have had a meeting. We were scheduled to have another one yesterday, but there were a lot of conflicts. So what we had done prior last week was send out the draft platform to get feedback from that group as well. But going forward, the Legislative Action Committee will actually start meeting basically right when school starts and start setting this up a little bit ahead of time so that, that feedback and information from the board, that survey, will probably come a little bit sooner than it did this year as we have that group kind of engage and take on that process. But ultimately, it'll be the recommendation from that group to the board that'll be coming forward.
And we're hopeful to have an in-person gathering with the legislators in early January. Do you want to talk about that at all as well?
Yeah, so right now, we're scheduled for January 10th to have an in-person coffee. That is our, we haven't been able to do it for a number of years, so it's been either virtual or canceled, but to be able to bring our legislators in, meet with them, there's, as we, Valerie had said, there's a lot of new legislators. We still have the same number in eight representatives and four senators, but the, the people in that group have changed quite a bit. So we have some that have continued, which is good, and we'll have some continuity. But to be able to bring them in and have the conversation with our platform, get that feedback from them, you know, there's, there's always a lot of robust questions that come from them on things that are important, and they want to utilize the expertise from our district, and we want to make sure we can provide them with that.
So I'll just say one last thing. Board members, we're looking for direction from you to do any finalizing of this before we bring it forward to you for action next week.
All right. Anybody have any thoughts, comments on this question?
Yes.
Can you give me, I'm sorry. What's the real statement?
I had a question, but you can. Just one of the questions that I had, I know we've talked a lot, particularly with the development of the scorecards, about alternative ways to measure student proficiency. And I see here one of the bullet points, you know, replace the MCA exam with the nationally recognized college entrance exam. That in particular is a new one for me. And I guess I'm just wondering where that came from and what the research is behind that solution.
Well, you know, I think the part, the piece in the platform is intended to be a little bit on the broad side, but, but the, how MCAs are currently measured, and I would guess I would start by deferring to those who are the, the experts in, back here, in all of our academic results, that it's, it's a measurement that's not necessarily fair across the board, and so they're trying to find something that's going to fit better. I know, as an example, there's pieces of the MCA that students take when the knowledge is fresh, like you finish a certain level of science and you take your portion of that test. Yet, if you're taking the math MCAs as an 11th grader, you might be taking, ask a bunch of questions about geometry that you learned in 8th grade and haven't touched since. So it's not necessarily fresh, or you're trying to recall something from three years ago. Not really an accurate measurement of that student's ability in that particular area, where I think some of the other testing results, and again, I'm going to defer to the experts behind me, that there's just some better alternatives there. And I don't, maybe the college entrance exam isn't the right direction. I think that's just something we'd have to weed out. But, but I think coming up with a better option so that we're getting an accurate measurement of what students are actually learning is the goal.
I agree with Director Brooks. I would not want it to say college entrance exam, but I think language that recognizes the spirit of it, I could support.
Same. That's what I was going to comment on, too, so thanks, Kay.
Yeah, there's a lot of talk about using, for example, the ACT or some other existing tests where it might be more relevant for those taking it because there's a little stronger push for it, especially in the high school level. We would argue, I mean, this is a, MCAs are just for accountability at the national level. It's not useful to us instructionally because it's such a lagging indicator. We've covered that many times with you. So I love what you're saying, is like, can we make the whole thing more relevant? But it's especially true at that high school level where those, you know, our juniors and seniors are looking for the next step in their life, and that state assessment's not as meaningful. It could be maybe more meaningful if it's something that can help them move on to their next phase in their career, their academic career. So that's kind of where the core conversation's coming from. There's lots of different, you know, whatever moves, you know, the federal level has to approve it. So we've tried in the past, tried to get something different, and it's not been approved at the federal level. So we're, we're going to keep trying to find the right inroad there to make it a more relevant, applicable, true measure of what we want to capture. I don't know if you want to, our team's here, so Tom, or anyone else, probably, if you want to add any to that, but that's, I think, the theme.
I think that is the theme.
Yes, I would.
MCAs are at, I'm sorry, MCAs are at 9th grade and, I'm sorry, 10th and 11th grade in CI.
Third through eighth.
Yeah, yeah. They're, yes, third through eighth and then 10th and 11th.
I definitely appreciate that clarification, and I, you know, agree with Director Simons. I guess I would just ask if we were going to advocate for something that we'd be really intentional and thoughtful about over advocating for, considering how difficult it is to actually make changes at the state or federal level. And in particular, I like the approach of trying to find something that is more relevant, but also, I guess, just from a perspective of equity, we know that these college entrance exams are also really then biased and have the same challenges that we see with the MCA exam. So just wanted us to be more thoughtful, definitely be advocating for some bigger changes much higher above us.
I would just add on to what Director Brooks is saying, is that a lot of colleges are no longer even requiring a lot of these exams. So while we need a measuring point, we need it to be, I just agree with what you're saying, like, because they're also a lot of times not even used. Colleges have their own other requirements now, too.
I think maybe you can jump in, Kelsey, with your time with AMSD. I think our challenge is where the odds are going to develop a different assessment versus is there a better choice already out there that's a step towards where we would be and not solving it? That's kind of a debate that's happening. There's no clear solution. So I wrote down maybe replace MCA exam with a more instruction-relevant assessment, something like that, that's a little more global, that gives us a conversation starter with our legislators, right, and any others.
I think it's really consistent with what other, with the other education organizations are talking about. I mean, they talk a lot about this, and AMSD, I mean, we keep hearing MCAs, it's not reflective of our students. I mean, I see it in my own kids, like, you know, this is not who you are, this is, and it ends up being reflective, you know, during their years. And so it is so tied to the achievement gap that, you know, I'm comfortable with changing that in language, but I think it has to be a conversation starter because that's, that's where the energy is right now. Position papers are starting to be, you know, written, well, they're already are, and kind of revised, or the whole work group looking at it. And it impacts our district because we see it in the World's Best Workforce all the time in all the things that we do. And it is not reflective of our students, especially of Rock and Brown students. It's not right. So I think, you know, we need to keep it on there for, you know, we can alter the language a little bit, but I think it's important.
But we could try to, kind of the timing, I was trying to think if we could get a revision in draft two, maybe by Friday, but our board packet goes out Friday because our board meeting's next week, so it's a little bit of a tight turnaround. So hopefully, we can capture the essence of what you brought up. Maybe I can include it in my superintendent update on Friday, and we could still make some modifications to the packet, you know, on Monday and Tuesday, if we need to. But take a look at it, let me see it Friday on my update.
I would say there's some value in that broader language because I was part of the assessment team at the state level that engaged with NDE when they were looking at alternative assessments when I was in Richfield, and the ACT and SAT came up as, as a frequent conversation is using as a high school end-of-entrance exam. And the challenge that kept coming back to us is, well, ACT isn't aligned to the statute adopted standards, it does not measure all the statute adopted standards. So to go with something like the ACT means they have to go back into standards revision in order to have an assessment that measures the actual standard. So it does start to unpack some bigger things than just putting an assessment in to replace it, or if we talk about a relevant assessment, that might give greater flexibility of something that could initiate sooner.
So thinking something along the lines of more relevant, more instruction-relevant measures of progress, and language like that, that opens the door.
Yeah, because I do think it's an important point to have on here, just a slight revision.
Yeah.
If I could, please, I just wanted to add a couple other bills that I'm paying attention to. It doesn't necessarily have to be reflective on the overall mandate, but these are things I think to pay attention to. One is one that I wrote, Grants for Accessibility Improvements, which allow school districts to get grants to expand their restroom and locker rooms, to provide more privacy and general mutual options. That one will also be going to committee, it's ready for that. And then in addition, I testified last year for a couple of anti-bullying bills. I have the House files here, but they're, they're changing those right now, but I'm also really interested to see and, and what potential those have in terms of, you know, expanding on the codification of safe and supportive schools, because I do not believe the Safe and Supportive Schools Act goes far enough in terms of protecting our students' safety or the accountability of that.
I think you're going to see a lot of discussion on that, and even the monetary side of that, there's been different, we avoided putting dollar marks into that specifically, we talked about it. There's others that want to triple it, some, you know, there's all of this from the monetary point, too. So we thought, let's leave it flexible enough for us to have insert the kind of needs that we see, and maybe that can support some of the same things without, see where the session goes, right? Because it starts in one place, maybe ends in another, so. And there's a few other items, I think, too, that could be on here, but then we've got it got a little extensive, so we have a longer list of things. Should we be asked, or where would we stand? We would, I think, I think we feel pretty comfortable, we know where the board as a whole generally is, that we could support. But Valerie, you coach us on, you know, if you can keep it to the core things that gives you strength while you still have the opportunity to talk about some needs at the same time.
So my feedback is that overall, it remains very consistent with the consensus of the entire board, our discussions over the course of this year and prior years. So it's, I think, exactly as we expect and looks great. I do have a concern about renewing existing levies without voter approval. That's a significant increase in taxation authority. exactly as we expect and looks great. I do have a concern about the renewing existing levies without voter approval. That's a significance increase in taxation authority that I'm personally, as a board member, not very comfortable with. So I'll just articulate that.
Valerie, you can jump in on this. I think this last, in November, that was the first time ever one didn't pass an operating renewal. So it was like 150 out of 151 over the last how many years?
Maybe not ever in the history of renewals, but it's been decades since a renewal has not passed. So this year was the first one.
So it's not really a problem to be addressed. Is that what I just heard? If they always are?
Other than, other than you're paying for it. The cost, energy, all those things to make sure it gets approved. Yeah. I mean, I'm looking at John and Kay, they gave six months of their lives to that effort that they didn't do other things with, right? So I, you know, I get the transparency perspective of it. Then the reality is that it's, it was literally like 100% passage over a long time. But that's the thinking behind it is let the local authorities determine. You're elected officials and can potentially make those decisions. So that's the conversation around it. I think it's a little different for operating than it is maybe on capital, capital projects. So we, we left it pretty open on this, because the data is primarily on operating, Valerie, if that's true. We've mainly been talking about operating renewals.
Yes.
Those tenure renewals, right? No, if you have to, if you want to ask for more like we did, you got to go up and let people know that's what you're asking for. So that's a little context to that, if that helps.
That helps, it's, yeah. I think it's something I still don't have a great deal of comfort with.
Any other check in?
Yeah, I just was hoping that Johnny would give me that number of the 1264 pupil, times our pupils, that 20?
Twenty-eight million.
What was the appropriate poll amount again? Thousand?
It's $1,264 per pupil.
That we're behind inflation since like 2003.
If you add our two press ups together, it's about the same number.
Yeah. And then just so that I can weigh in on some of this discussion, I'm really glad that we are talking about replacing the MCA exam. Again, I don't know that we have any kind of standardized test that really truly reflects what we're looking for. And then I am very complicated with the federal, what the federal government wants us to report through the state and what the state has. And so there's all these moving pieces that we have to figure out to stay in line. And then at the same time, keep students and scholars at the center of that. And what is our goal for what we want for our scholars? Do we want them to, you know, spit out a bunch of memorization things, or do we want them to be able to solve problems and think critically? And that's, you know, I realize that's a much bigger discussion than legislation can do, but it's something that I think we need to keep in mind when we're talking about how we're going to comply with the federal requirements and what we can do besides the MCAs. That's it.
Well, I would add, you as a board have been really clear that what really, really matters to us is what we're doing on our vision cards. Because we believe we're making improvements in the areas that we've identified, maybe this, some of these organizations begin to take care of themselves a bit more. So you're, you're really focusing on relevant assessments, relevant targets, aspiring to, you know, high-level targets in, as we get through the year with each of the vision cards. So I think what we believe too, those, if we can really make impact on the things we've identified in our system, that's most relevant for us. The state accountability cases, you know, are going to kind of continue to be a challenge. But if we can make progress on our vision cards and those targets that we've set, now you're going to see the transformation you're hoping for. Do you want to add?
No, I just think, I think it looks good. I think it's, you know, we've always talked about how we want to, you know, be in line with the educational organizations, but also be really unique to our district. And so I think this is a nice job. I think the LAC is going to really help, just ensure that, you know, all the bases are fully heard on here this next year, and they have some exciting plans to fill. All right.
We're on time. If we're not, we're on time. Six thirty-five, we're a little minutes after. So our monitoring reports, strategic direction D.
Welcome to you.
Thank you, Valerie.
Thank you, Superintendent McIntyre. We continue, we continue to have excitement. Our data and assessment team from Learning and Achievement as we present our second vision card. Superintendent McIntyre introduced our group, but just to, just to make sure, Robin Consolus, Director of Learning and Achievement, Tom Watkins, Director, not Director, Data and Assessment Coordinator, and Gal Thor, our Data and Assessment Specialist. If I could offer a couple of thoughts here that may seem, seem redundant from our first presentation on the first vision card. This is our baseline year, and so we're going to be seeing that populated in the card. And it is a work in progress. And so your feedback tonight is invaluable to us as we are attempting to capture, I think, Superintendent McIntyre, as he was stating, the metrics that are most valuable for our system to be, to be identifying for our cards. So it reflects collaboration. We had our Executive Director of Technology, because this card asks us to look at the system of operational excellence, innovation, accountability, and sustainability. So we look across our organization to identify those metrics. So we have representation from technology. We had representation looking over at John Morsette from Finance and Operations and some of his key leadership to work with our vision card steering committee, to be able to identify what are the metrics that we should be looking at to identify for this card. So there was a lot of thinking, because I don't know that we, we've collectively worked together to, to talk about this, this data this broadly, but this in-depth as well as a group. So, so heads were hurting after, after the rounds of discussion. So what does this look like then, and how do we measure it? We, you're going to see in the presentation four indicators for Strategic Direction D, and they're all centered around how we're describing continuous improvement. And what we strive for around continuous improvement. The first one is to fundamentally reimagine how to perform procedures and tasks. And we call that organizational continuous improvement. That's our first indicator. Our second area is to ensure transparency in reporting, and that is aligned to student developmental skills and supports, our second indicator. The third is allocate proper resources that meet current needs, which we call, just simply, resource allocation. And then our last indicator is to anticipate future expectations and desired outcomes, which we identify. The fourth indicator is achieve dreams, teaching, learning, and trust in the district. So I just, I want to acknowledge all of the collaboration and all the members who were a part of putting together this card. This is, this is arguably the toughest card for us, without, without question. And so we've, we've not only leaned into the conversation with each other, but we've also consulted teamwork to, to help us also identify additional pieces that when we get your feedback, we'll be seeking to refine this even further. So without further ado, I'll turn it over to, to our team.
Thank you. Good evening. We're going to be walking through the presentation, the paper presentation that you're having over tonight. So we'll just move through to that. And I will begin. So really, our outcome for tonight is for you to receive the baseline data on high priority initiatives for Strategic Direction D, and to understand the alignment to the operational plans in the, with the vision card data that we're, we are doing. And as Dr. Bass said, this is a work in progress. We really are hoping to also elicit feedback from you on if these, if these initiatives are, and if these indicators are accurately identifying what we're looking for in Vision Card D. So I'm just going to bring you through the vision card piece that we've talked about in the past, but just kind of to re-ground us. So we have, as a system, have decided that the vision cards will serve as critical data points towards the realization of the daily, of the desired daily experiences for our students, staff, and families. And vision cards measure the district's success in achieving the strategic directions. They provide us data to support and assess progress towards the narrative vision outlined in the strategic roadmap. Vision cards set ongoing district goals for performance and continuous improvement. On the next slide, you will see the three-year operational plan work aligned with Strategic Direction D. And on this slide, you'll see that there is learning work initiatives and implementation works. Implementation initiatives. Okay, thank you. Yes, right. On the next slide, you will see, as Dr. Bass called out, the four different indicators on Vision Card, on Vision Card D. And so we'll be touching on these four indicators that are currently on Strategic Direction D. They are organizational continuous improvement, equitable resource allocation review, student development, skills and support, achieving dreams, teaching, learning, and trust in the district. And these indicators were written at the very beginning of the development of the strategic directions are, they are a starting point for this vision card. As we continue to research how to better measure Strategic Direction D, as Dr. Bass said, we're going to be working with teamwork so closely, look closely at the indicators to ensure that they are representing what we as a system are looking for. We want to see feedback from you, because our goal is to make our efforts toward the realization of Strategic Direction D transparent and measurable.
So our first indicator, I'm on page 12 here, it says D1, organizational continuous improvement. So our first indicator is called this, organizational continuous improvement. And it's a process indicator, which means we're describing the adult actions that are designed to help students accomplish our mission. To measure our progress on this indicator, we use six measures. The first measure is from our staff stakeholder survey, which we've administered annually since 2014, apart from during the pandemic. And one of the scales or groups of questions on the staff stakeholder survey is the teaching and learning scale. And the questions on the scale were only asked of staff who indicated that they were teachers. The measure was the percentage of teachers responding strongly agree or agree. And two sample questions on the teaching and learning scale were, my school sets high expectations for all students, and my school sets high expectations for all staff. Overall, we can see that 75% of teachers agreed or strongly agreed with the questions on the scale in 2022, which is higher than 2019, but just below the percentage from February 2020 prior to the pandemic. And if we go to page 13, here we're looking at teacher perceptions of teaching and learning, broken up by grade range, and teachers working in special education sites, which includes community-based vocational assessment and training, or CE V A T, and the OEC. They responded with lower than average agreement on the teaching and learning scale in spring of 2019, but this increased by 10% in 2020 and by almost 40% by 2022. And similarly, teachers in adult learning sites, which includes Adult Basic Education and OEC, had perceptions of teaching and learning in 2022 that increased by more than 10% each of the past two survey administrations. Perceptions of high school teachers were lower than those of teachers at other grade ranges, but improved from 2020 to 2022. Early childhood and middle school teachers perceived higher levels of teaching and learning at their sites in 2019 than they did in later years. Moving to slide, our page 14, this graph contains the scale results by teacher race and gender. And for teachers who identified as Asian, Black, Hispanic, or multiracial, perceptions of teaching and learning were mixed over the past three survey years. For Asian and Hispanic teachers, some of this variation could be due to the small number of teachers surveyed, which was less than 20. Teachers identifying as white held perceptions of teaching and learning that remained stable and average across these three years, where female and male teachers held perceptions that were comparable each of these years. And at this point, I'll turn it over to Anthony.
Good evening, board members, OEC team, and community. If we turn to slide 15, we'll start kind of on the technology components. Technology is an integral part of our organization's work from instruction to operations. Vision Card D reviews our strategic technology work through the aspect of operational continuous improvement. Two key areas that align this work and have initiatives in the board's three-year operational plan are cybersecurity and the delivery of technology services, or IT operations. These two areas are critical to ensure our students have the technical resources and a safe digital environment to actualize their daily lived experience. If we look at cybersecurity or information security, this is managing risks to the confidentiality, integrity, and availability of information using information, physical, and technical controls. Mitigating cyber threats consists of technical solutions and building a culture around cyber awareness, as the human element is the greatest threat to all organizations. K-12 organizations are in a unique space as we work through balancing cyber risk and educational innovation. OEC Schools has been working towards an improved cybersecurity posture for the last five years. It started with a comprehensive security audit in August 2018 to understand where our environment was at. Since then, we have developed a cybersecurity plan, developed incident response playbooks for critical security situations, improved and enhanced technical controls, developed a digital security response team, developed employee training, and conducted regular security assessments. Our work around cybersecurity continues to grow and evolve, especially as school systems become a greater target for threat actors. The metrics reported, provided in this report are the current data elements that we are reviewing to understand the impact of our work as we improve our cybersecurity posture. As we continue to mature and review our practices, other metrics may be utilized or added in the future. The monitoring report provides greater detail around each of these data points. The first metric, which is listed in the, the report, but not on this slide, is around phishing. It's, it's our ongoing phishing assessment score. For this report, we utilized our spring assessment data as provided by NOBA Forum. The metric represents the percentage of employees who opened and engaged with an unknown email that was a replica of what a real malicious email would look like. This metric allows us to understand the efforts and strategies that have been implemented around organizational training, awareness, and response to the potential threats that come through our email system. Since the 2019-20 school year, we have made great progress in better educating our staff around phishing emails, and have noticed a decline in employees engaging with unknown emails. Anecdotally, we have also seen an increase in the number of reported suspicious emails. Last school year, as noted in the report, by seven and a half percent, we saw a slight increase from the previous year. In talking with colleagues in other districts, this has been a post-pandemic trend of seeing an increase as we navigate increased staff turnovers in our systems, increased volumes of email activity, and an increase in more sophisticated phishing attempts in K-12. Our second security metric comes from our Filtered IT Governance Assessment. This is an annual self-assessment that is completed by our digital security team and measures our progress on implementing system structures and policies towards practices that create a strong cybersecurity posture. This assessment is aligned with several industry standards for IT operations and cybersecurity best practices, including the NIST, which is the National Institute of Standards and Technology Cybersecurity Framework, which is what we align our strategies around. The assessment provides a score on a one through five scale, with five demonstrating high maturity level. Our score for the 21-22 school year was an increase from the previous year at 4.3. Our score on this assessment continues to outperform state average for other middle school, other Minnesota school districts who utilize this assessment. As a note, we are reviewing a new IT governance assessment through the MSI SAC, or the Multi-State Informational Sharing and Analysis Center under the Department of Homeland Security, as an additional or replacement metric moving forward, which would give us a greater K-12 comparison benchmark. The last cybersecurity metric is our Microsoft Secure Score. This is a relatively new metric that our team has started using to understand our technical controls and mitigating and managing possible threats. This score is being utilized as the majority of our technical infrastructure operates the Microsoft platform. This score is a real-time metric that is provided on a scale from zero to 100. It also provides a benchmark to similar organizations. The score for this report was pulled on November 28th of 2022. This score is 54.7 and is higher than benchmark organizations. A score greater than 50 indicates an organization is moving in the right direction, with an ideal score between 60 and 80. A score of 80 or higher demonstrates a high level of maturity in technical controls. If we change to slides 16, this will start our, our look at IT operations. IT operations is our organization's ability to deliver technology, resources, services, and supports to ensure we function from classroom to operations. On July 1st, 2021, our Division of I2T2, or the Information On July 1, 2021, our Division of I-2-T-2, or the Information Instructional Technology Team, realigned its team under a tiered service and support model to meet the new demands of an evolving organization post-pandemic. To measure our effectiveness of delivering high levels of IT operations, two metrics have been utilized as we review service structures and organizational needs and technology. The first metric is our Support KPI, or Key Performance Indicators, which is an internal measure of our team's ability to provide service and support of our technology resources. The use of KPI metrics and prioritizing incidents from low to critical is new for our team, and we continue to norm our practices around these definitions in order to better break out data in a meaningful way. For this report, we are using the overall average response time to technology incidents, which is inclusive of all priority statuses. This average will be used as we build better capacity in our team for better drill down data. The average response time is measured in hours. Our average overall response time for the 21-22 school year was 250 hours and was an improvement from the previous year by 96 hours. The target upper bound of this metric in the Vision Card, or the Vision/Blue range, is set to 120 hours or less, which would align with our low priority KPI target. As a note, our current configuration of the ticketing system that tracks this data does not take into account business hours and non-operational days, so weekends and district closure time is included. We are working towards tightening configuration of the system to report more precise data. The second operation metric on page 17 is our Filtered Operations Score. OEC schools has been using Filtered Digital Learning Inventory with students, staff, and families since the 2020-21 school year. We have reported these scores and findings historically through the Digital Learning for All Board update. The inventory measures six domains related to the impact and implementation of digital learning that are aligned to the ISTI, or the International Society for Technology and Education Standards. Three of the measured domains are specific to learning and instructional practice. The other three domains, which are used for this report, are specific to IT operations and include leadership and vision, technology infrastructure, and resources. These three domains collected data on technical resource availability for instruction and operations, reliability of technology resources, the leadership and visioning around the delivery, development, and deployment of technology solutions, and the capacity of providing services and support for effective end users' use of technology resources. The score provided by Filtered is done on a scale from zero to seven and then converted into a capacity percentage for each domain. The metric for this report uses the average of the capacity percentage for the three identified domains. In the 21-22 school year, we reached a 78% average capacity score between those three operations domains, which is an increase from the 2019-2020 school year. Our scores have consistently remained above state and national scores of participating K-12 districts. As a note, this year's administration of the inventory will begin next week and run through January 6 in alignment with previous year's administration windows.
Our second indicator for Vision Card D is called Equitable Resource Allocation, and so that's on page 18. This is another process indicator that's designed to describe adult actions being implemented to impact student outcomes. And our first measure on this indicator is Strategic System Snapshot from the Education Resource Strategies. We'll administer this 10-minute survey to multiple stakeholder groups in the current school year and include the results in our next report for Vision Card D. Our second measure is a question from the Equimetric Survey, which provided some scales reported for Vision Card E. And in the next two slides, we'll take a closer look at both of these measures. So on page 19, ERS described the Strategic System Snapshot as "a quick self-assessment that helps district leaders and community members better understand how well resources, like people, time, and money, are used across the district, and whether the central office or schools have the enabling conditions to help all students meet these standards." The Strategic System Snapshot includes seven scales, or groups of questions, represented in the center in the outer sections of this graphic: standards and instructional resources, funding and portfolio, school support and accountability, and community engagement, leadership, teaching, and school design. And school design includes elements of the other six scales. So just off for one example, ERS describes the teaching scale this way: "Teachers have the time and support for team collaboration and learning. They're strategically hired and assigned, and their career paths and compensation enable growth and reward contribution." And one more example, school design means "school rules, teams, and schedules are structured to enable personalized time and attention, teacher collaboration, and professional learning." So personally, I'm really looking forward to gathering and reporting this information, but especially using it to improve our services on behalf of our students and other stakeholders. On page 20, the second metric within this indicator is a survey item taken from the Equimetric Survey. The question says, "In my organization, resources are dedicated to improving diversity, equity, inclusion, and cultural competence." And respondents selected a response between 1 and 10, with 1 to 6 ranging from disagree to neutral, 7 to 8 representing agree, and 9 and 10 representing strongly agree. The percentages of agree and strongly agree have been combined for use in this indicator. In the 2021-22 survey, the percentage of staff agreeing or strongly agreeing with that statement was 61%, down from 68% in 2020-21. Another way of looking at this is in the chart to note that in 2021, we had about a third of staff in each of these reporting categories in 2021, with 34% responding strongly agreed, 33% responding agreed, and 33% in the neutral to disagree category. And next, Gao is going to take us through Indicator D3.
All right, so if you can turn over to the next slide for Indicator D3. This indicator is called Student Developmental Skills and Supports. Again, this is an outcome measure that looks at student data. And as part of our current theory of action, we believe that if adult actions and our process indicators that Tom and Anthony had just gone over are being implemented with fidelity, we can expect to observe strong results for student outcomes. Moving forward, we will monitor this theory of action to ensure that these are the correct indicators to measure in order to move toward our mission and vision. This data on this slide looks at results from the Minnesota Student Survey, which is a survey that is administered every three years to grades 5, 8, 9, and 11. You will see that this indicator has two metrics: developmental skills and developmental supports. These two categories come from the analysis of the Minnesota Student Survey that is conducted by the Minnesota Youth Development Research Group at the University of Minnesota. I know that's a lot of groups. The developmental skills looks at students' commitment to learning, their positive identity and outlook, and their social competence, whereas developmental supports measures to the extent our students feel empowered, whether or not they feel that they have family and community support, and the support of teachers in school. We believe that these qualities are prerequisites for excellence in our students. In other words, if our students are committed to learning, have a positive identity and outlook, are socially competent, feel empowered, feel supported, then we can achieve a sustainable system of excellence. The categories of developmental skills and developmental supports each include around 20 questions from the Minnesota Student Survey. And the next slide in the presentation will show the specific questions from the survey that are included in the analysis. The numbers that you see in the table are index scores that are calculated to capture the severity of all response types, from the favorable responses to the not so favorable ones. And the monitoring report that we have included along with Vision Card D will provide a more detailed explanation of how we were able to generate a summary score that was reportable for the purposes of Vision Card. Overall, the closer we get to an index score of 7.5, the closer we get to 100% of our students answering that they do indeed care about school, feel good about themselves, feel safe, feel cared for, and et cetera. You'll see that developmental skills and the developmental supports have remained stable from 2019 to 2022, with developmental supports having an index score of 4.9 to 4.9 from those two years, and developmental supports having an index score of 5.5 to 5.4 from 2019 to 2022. And again, the closer we get to an index score of 7.5, the closer we get to 100% of our students answering most favorably and positively. Go on to the next page. As I previously mentioned, this is the walkthrough of the two categories that were reported on, and the scales and specific survey questions that fall into each of the categories. And then moving right along to the next slide with the tables. These two tables show the index scores from 2016, 2019, and 2022, which are the three most recent years with data that we can get from the Minnesota Student Survey. You'll see that we get the results grouped by grade level and gender. And the average column that you see to the very right is the median of all student groups, which was what was reported in the first slide of D3. You'll see that developmental skills scale has decreased over the past three survey administrations from 5.3 in 2016 to 4.9 in 2019 and 2022. Overall, the developmental support scale has remained stable over this period. In each year, fifth-grade females had the highest perceived developmental skills and supports. In terms of developmental supports, the next highest perceptions were among our fifth-grade males. In each year, our ninth and 11th grade females typically have perceptions on both scales that were the lowest.
If we go on to page 24, our fourth indicator is called Achieve Dreams: Lifelong Learning, Classroom Learning, Teaching, and Trust in School District. Like D3, this is an outcome indicator telling us how our customers are perceiving our work. For this indicator, we start with four scales, or groups of questions, from the student stakeholder survey. And for each question, students can respond yes, always, no, never, mostly yes, mostly no, or maybe sometimes. The percentage of students responding yes, always, or mostly yes is referred to as the percent positive, and this will be the percentage we'll report for these four scales. When looking just at the three years in which this survey was administered before and after the pandemic, you can see that our students were the most positive about the Achieve Dreams and Lifelong Learning Scales in the 2018-19 school year, but they were most positive about classroom learning and teaching in the 2021-22 school year. On page 25, on this chart, we can see some of the detail behind one of these scales. You can see all of these charts in the monitoring report. And in each of these charts, we added reference lines. The green line is 4% above the three-year average, and the orange line is 4% below the three-year average. And here, we're looking at students' percent positive on the Achieve Dreams scale. We can note two things. First, students identifying as Black had above-average perceptions of Achieve Dreams in 2019 and 2020. And second, students identifying as Hawaiian Pacific Islander, Hispanic, or White were in the above-average range, or average range, in 2019 and 2020. Moving on to the next page here, page 26. There's also a family stakeholder survey scale that we use for this indicator, and the scale is called Innovation, Excellence, Accountability, and Sustainability. And the questions included are as follows: My scholars provided with the appropriate materials, for example, books and handouts, they need to learn. My scholars provided with the appropriate technology they need to learn. School staff have helped my scholars set goals for their future. And my scholars' school works to prepare them for their future. Families who received the survey could respond to these questions by selecting never, not often, sometimes, often, or always. The percentage reported is the combination of the two most positive responses, often and always, and this was averaged across all four questions. The question with the highest percent positive was my scholars provided with the appropriate technology they need to learn, which was at 93%. On to page 27. This chart shows scale percentages broken out by student race and ethnicity. The six typically reported racial categories are further segmented by student home language into ethnic categories to provide better insight into and give voice to more groups of families within our district community. We can see that families who speak East African or West African language in the home had the highest ratings overall. This is part of a bigger pattern because in each racial group, non-English-speaking families were more positive than English-speaking families. And I'll pass it back to Robin.
So in concluding this, really looking at our next steps, and we're going to continue to lean about Vision Card D and aligning, looking at aligning the data sources. And we'll continue to seek feedback to ensure that we're measuring what we intend to measure and what we want to add for our students in their daily, desired daily lived experience. We'll continue to adjust our data sources to provide transparent measurement of our work towards achieving the goals, and we'll continue to research how we include additional data that provides greater context, is asset-based, and humanizes our scholars' learning experience. So that is the end of our presentation, and we'll open it up for...
And I just want to add a bit of a lucky, timely thing on the phone that was very interesting for our team. So yesterday, many of us were up in Minnesota, school violence, and I was getting used to think of, and I'm going to order the board members a copy of the book, The Violence Project. The presenters of that, we've seen them a couple times now, but we took a larger team. There's probably 500 people there statewide.
Easily.
It was districts from all states. In this particular Vision Card, D3 and D4, these are your windows into how are we doing with school violence and violence prevention, and how we handle concerning behaviors? Because when you back it up, when they unpack all this, it really comes down to connection, relationships, and support. So prevention and response, we talk a lot about that, right? It was clear to us yesterday, you know, the number of times our scholars experienced trauma, crisis, and those types of experiences versus how well we can create connections, create support, student-to-student connections, student-to-adult connections. I was sort of going, we built this card, but we landed on the types of measures as an organization, we can see, are we moving towards mitigating and working towards and preventing the kinds of concerning behaviors or school violence kind of behaviors that we, we double state ambitions to see some increases around. So I'm really proud of our team because I don't know if you thought of it that way, but when the presenters really unpacked, you know, some of the most concerning, the same theme showed up. And so to have some metrics now, you're over here to see how are we doing organizationally, especially around D3, when you look at positive identity and outlook, social competence, empowerment, family, and teacher support, those are moving in the right direction, we're doing our job, at least we're doing the right direction for mitigating and preventing, you know, the kinds of challenging behaviors that we see. So I could go way deep into this. Our team was there, we had a large team there, including our risk management team, student services, we had a number of principals there as well, we looked at through a building lens. So I'm collecting their feedback today, key findings, and I'll share that out with the board coming up. But that school climate and culture piece we talked about, now we have some metrics that kind of help us gauge where is that going? We also have the physical things, and when you think cybersecurity, we've talked a lot about physical plant security, right? With emergency preparedness and response items that you've seen many times. So it's a starting point, right? But where you can see, we're trying to hone in on some indicators and markers that will tell us what's the health of our organization. And I think some of you had some questions about building specific. We're going to work to get there because I think we're, like you, we're looking at, where are those exemplar sites? How can we replicate that? So remember what Dr. Bass said at the beginning, we're starting at baseline, and we're going to learn throughout the year, and how do we continue to refine this and really drill this down? Because Dr. Davis all said earlier, we're still in the run of implementation of district, department, and site operational plans, right? Building that infrastructure for continuous improvement. But I was just, I had to... But I was just, I had to bring it up because I was so pleased yesterday we sat there and listened, like, okay, we're on, we're on it. We're on the right things to really measure the most critical things that can turn those school climate, culture experiences in the right way, and this data will now tell us. So I think we've been hungry for this kind of data for a long time, since I've been here. I look at a couple of board members, you've been pushing me on this since I started. So it's a starting point, but I just want to commend our team for landing on some pretty powerful indicators as we get going. I think the risk is we could add a lot more on, and this could, again, turn into a dozen pages of data. And so what, it's us filtering what's the highest level wants to report on knowing that. And I also want to acknowledge the report in your materials. Another very high-quality report put together that goes deeper. And I think as you digest this, please ask our team those kind of questions. I know a couple have come in already that we can add additional context. So with that, of kind of board members' feedback, questions, are teams hungry for, you know, are we on the right track here?
All right, yeah. Do you have any questions or comments?
I just wanted to say thank you for pointing out Cory, that last additional piece, because that really is the key to mitigating undebatable behaviors in school is really building those relationships. And I think that we're going to do it, empower, connected, and welcome, and just having a positive daily experience is really the key to that. I can't tell you how many anecdotal stories I've heard from teachers where, when they were able to have a more meaningful connection with a student that was having difficulty in the classroom, that student did a one-eighty and their behavior completely changed. And so we can do that in a global way in our district. You know, I just, I really encourage that kind of work, and that's exactly what we've been talking about for a long time. So I want to appreciate, I just want to say I appreciate you acknowledging that piece, that because they are very connected, even though it may not look that way from the outside, they're very connected pieces. But I did find it, this very last slide, I thought it was really interesting, that our families that do not speak English as their native language at home, do we have any insight into that or, you know, further information about why the perception is so different?
The only piece that I think I could speak to with that is just that that's something that we've seen in other years with regard to the family or the parent survey, that we've had, especially for East African, West African, they might have higher perceptions. But yeah, in terms of exactly why that is, I can't speak to that.
But the good news is that we're forming relationships with communities that we can use this information to have those conversations with, especially the East African, West African communities.
So that was really very, like, question, question, was it, we got information about that? Oh, and the Achieving Dreams, do we have any other information about why that had, which they'd be fine?
I think it's, well, Tom's probably more of a technical answer, mine's more of a perceptual one. You know, it's been the last, go back between now and the last few years, it's been heavy. It's been heavy on all of us, you know, for a lot of things. So hopefully we're coming, you know, we're seeing improvements there. So I'm really curious to see what the next year's data looks like after we've come through, you know, it's been, like yesterday, we heard at the violence conference, it's been isolating. You know, when, when you're not connected, your hope isn't there. So they really, it's kind of like, there's no connection, there's not feeling of hope. So it just helps begin, we can really hone in on what are these, what are these data sets? Now we can start digging into why, right? Why, what does that look like for a third grader versus a twelfth grader? What's the difference, right? We can start asking some different kind of why questions. And of our families and communities too, because I think it's beyond our schools. So Tom, I don't know if I saw.
Yeah, no, it's all good, it's all good. We did dig into this a little bit in the spring when the results first came out. And I don't know if board members remember that, but we did have a few different slides that we looked at with that and kind of digging into the questions. And so we can go back and sort of look at some of that. But yeah, I mean, two out of the three questions on this scale really are about staff assisting students, right? And identifying their dreams, their goals, and, you know, next steps. And so one thing that we've noticed with this is that students that are receiving services for special education or receiving services for English learner, you know, services, they're going to respond higher with this because they do have staff that are, you know, going to spend more time with them, more specifically related to their goals. And so when we think about the impact of pandemic with regard to that, I think that there were just less availability, you know, and less, less time that they might be in front of somebody. They might not have the same kind of relationship, same kind of connection. And as Cory was saying, you know, lots of other things that wind up coming on the plate of the staff and the students that would maybe diminish that, you know, meaningfulness of those conversations. So I, that's kind of the narrative that I see with it. But yeah, we do hope it thunders back.
So like you said, we did get a lot of really good detail in the spring. So overall, I think that the, this is exactly the right balance of what needs to be on the card. And then, you know, using the detailed information for action, right? Like you spoke about Cory. And I think that having the detailed report accompany this is really fantastic and a best practice because it gives us the depth of detail to equip ourselves for these meetings and to be able to have the right level of discussion when we're looking at the presentation. So I, I think that's just exceptionally done, this pairing the report with the presentation. And I, I really appreciate the measures that are related to the scholars and to their developmental skills and supports. And I think the skills are really statements of personal agency that we can continue to cultivate. So how much do students feel that they own the skills, that they, that they have ownership over what they can influence, and that they have the levers for themselves to pursue their dreams and goals? And so I, I wonder if we're beginning to think about additional initiatives to further that work of personal agency and empowerment, like Portrait of a Graduate, goal setting, kind of if we're beginning to think about some of those ideas for the future based on this information.
Well, it informs the learning work side of our operational class. So we're in implementation of a number of things, you know, if you go back and that's just built around. But even just the example of redesigning teacher support, how are we supporting our staff to do what you just described? Especially with the workforce being what it is, right? So that'll refine, the data will help us refine the next set of priorities and initiatives for next year in that cycle, right? Getting the timing of the cycle down is probably the learning we're still going to go through for the rest of the year, I think.
And we can pair this data, we can pair this data with, like, the work from the Brooklyn Bridge Youth Alliance and some from other organizations like you mentioned too, that, that work that's taking place and get that rich sense of kind of the full opportunity.
So a few insights in working through this, and thank you for answering my question when I emailed, I appreciate that. I would just like to echo that this, the report accompanying the slides was phenomenal and easy to cross-reference. It seems to me that, especially in middle school, we have an issue with perception of setting goals and what, you know, what that means. And I am curious to find out with our implementation of programs such as Avid, whether that makes a big difference. So I'm really excited to see the next set of data to do that. And also, as, you know, my research in parent involvement in education, I wonder how much we're providing parents on what we're doing with scholars? Because I don't know about you, but when my kids were in middle school students, what do you do in school today? I don't know. You know, so if there's that parent, you know, engagement piece on, on setting goals and even partnership with the, with the scholars in setting those goals, which I know a lot of us, a lot of people in the system do, just to be more, you know, intentional language with the scholars, maybe. I also, the other thing I just want to geek out about is I'm super excited about the developmental skills and developmental supports, skills that we're looking at and, or the indicators that we're looking at. The research from Minnesota, University of Minnesota, and education departments. The research is clear, has been clear for many decades, that if we have these things, success will happen in education and in life. So I'm excited to see how that changes, but particularly with the Strategic System for Strong Schools snapshot. I can't even wait to see what happens with that now, that, because I think this is where we're talking about, you know, we're having our MCA discussion, right? This is the stuff that means something for success in, in life and in school. And I just, I don't know, just, I'm done geeking out.
I, yeah, I echo that, I mean, I think the depth of this is exactly what we've been looking for. And, you know, it's really what can make changes in that system. So I think this is the right direction. And yeah, I mean, I think it's, it's super, I just think it brings a lot, like, we have the data. We have the, you know, that quantitative piece with the questions that, you know, we're really looking for around the developmental supports and skills. I mean, that is a sport that you talked about, and I, you know, with the violence prevention and things. I mean, that's what actually like makes a huge difference in the lives of our young people, as well as getting, you know, caregivers really involved in, in the work. And so, and this is, I think it's probably some of the most digestible also kind of data that, you know, I've seen, you know, especially here at this.
Okay, what you're seeing, board members, is, and you talked about this data turning into information, information turning into action. And measuring our progress, is that happening in, in, you know, that improvement cycle? So thank you for the feedback. What you'll see next week at the board meeting is a shorter, more, a higher-level version of this. The background material will be in the packet so that the public can have access to that. So the presentation will be a little shorter, more concise, but the second central. I'm going to move us on to our enrollment update. John's got an update for us. And one of the notes before John gets started, and you can reference back to as a resource, is that Parent Choice survey we did with Morris Leatherman, is that a year ago?
It was two thousand and twenty-one, I want to say kind of springtime-ish.
Well, there's lots of, we flushed out a lot of items that are related to this that John didn't do. Don't forget about that really valuable survey you did, the school, I think, is pretty relevant. So thank you, John.
All right, thank you. So tonight's presentation is to provide an overview of the enrollment trends used to make a five-year enrollment projection. These projections are important for decision-making regarding budgeting and staffing for the upcoming school year. So if you flip to the first chart.
Sorry, my Messenger kids, maybe I have that on my phone, my kid friends, I'm going to keep going. I think I pushed the wrong button, so sorry.
No worries. Say hi from office. So the first chart you'll look at is a, an overall look at district enrollment for the last five years through fiscal year two thousand and twenty-three. The four prior years are final year-end data, and then the fifth column, the two thousand and twenty-three year, is through November first data. These first two slides we look, we'll look at include pre-K through twelve. All the remainers are just K through twelve. But just to give you a better picture of the total students that we enroll. So our actual enrollment for the current year increased over last year by two hundred and one students, or about one percent. Our K-12 enrollment is twenty thousand, one hundred and eighty students as of November first, which is one hundred and eighteen under the projection, which is about point five eight percent below what we projected. Now, that number changes. Last year, we saw that numbers decline steadily through the course of the year. So far this year, it's gone up and down in little bits. I believe as of yesterday, it was actually up over twenty thousand, two hundred and fourteen, something like that. So it's, it fluctuates a little depending on enrollment changes. I know as an example, we just started a new trimester that actually brought some kids into two-seven-nine online and moved some around. So this is an example that changes here.
I just got to point out, with our size, to be within a half a percentage of projection, it charges with five thousand kids, almost one thousand kids. So just want to acknowledge that.
And it was my first try. It's my first year doing it for this school, so I had to go out on a limb a little bit. All right, so as we move to the enrollment categories slide, in addition to students coming into Osseo area schools from other public options, school choice means that some of our students that reside within the district choose options outside of our district. So this is taking a little bit of a look at that. Please note that the twenty-three data is preliminary because again, it's only through November, and the other data is year-end. So the number of students opting into Osseo, indicated in the red section here, increased by a hundred and sixty-nine students to a total of one thousand, six hundred and seventy-nine. So that's that, kind of that open enrollment coming in for us. That's actually a nice sign. That's, that's a fairly substantial improvement year-over-year to see more kids coming in, especially knowing that the two-seven-nine online program declined a lot as, as people chose to go to, back to a more traditional model. The K-12 enrollment chart shows Osseo area schools' fall enrollment over the last five years broken out by elementary and secondary grade levels. So the red line is students served in secondary grades six through twelve, and the blue line is elementary grades K through five. You can see that the notable dip in two thousand and twenty-one for the pandemic year had a much higher impact on elementary than it did on secondary. Typically, a thorough analysis of our five-year historical trend is a key component in projecting future enrollment. Over the past several years, we've seen enrollment stabilize and grow, particularly at the secondary level. Except for that pandemic year, enrollment is trending up for both elementary and secondary. Minnesota has an open enrollment options program that are known as, or an enrollment options program that are known as open enrollment. Families can make choices to enroll their students in public schools that are not the school district where they reside. Osseo has consistently enrolled around thirteen hundred to seventeen hundred students from other Minnesota school districts. Again, we talked about what the increase was there, that was, so we're up to about eight point one five percent of our district's total enrollment is from open enrollment coming in. Most of these students come from Anoka Hennepin, Robinsdale, and Brooklyn Center, although we still typically lose more students to those schools than we gain. However, Minneapolis is an example where we gain more than we lose.
And board members, I'm going to send you that parent choice survey again so you can look at the, you know, the top reasons why people come, the top reasons why people remember that they looked at that for us. I think we're so pretty close.
So the next slide that looks like the big, the big graph, that's the one I'm kind of looking at. There's two of these graphs that have a lot of detailed information. Am I on the same one as you guys?
Is it this one, Tom? No, what page, what's the page number?
Fifty-six.
I'm looking at a different sheet.
It's fifty-nine in the minutes.
I think he's looking at fifty-four, if I match it with this.
Okay. Well, so we just talked about that one. The five bars with the red line across the top, that's fifty-five, sorry. I see what it did. So just to kind of give you an idea, the enrollment actual versus projected, that one. So a hundred and eighteen students below projection. And, and what I was going to say here is the information that I'm talking about here is in the pack, I think it's in the pack. She may have skipped out on her, else I had it marked, and I go, I'll send it to you. It's, yeah, so there's, there's two slides where we can look a little bit deeper into school by school. Were you up, were you down? And if I, if it didn't come across, I'll send it to you, but I'll give you the, the highlights of it. So like, as I mentioned originally, we were, we had projected a hundred and eighteen more kids than actually came. But as you break that down, in the elementary, we're twenty-seven kids above projection. Middle school is forty-nine below. Senior high is two hundred and thirty-three kids above projection. And then the alternative, OALC, two-seven-nine online, three hundred and twenty-nine kids below. Of that, three hundred and twenty-four is two-seven-nine online. And that is all very much due to more comfort being in closer proximity and in a more traditional brick-and-mortar model.
John, we were worried about kindergarten, so what, tell us more about kindergarten.
So kindergarten, I'm trying to look at my overall. So, so we were under projection by a bit, but the, the So, so we were under projection by a bit, but the vast majority of that was at 279 online. I think we started the year with 10 kids in kindergarten and projected 42. All, all in all, we ended up down just under 100 kids total in kindergarten. But we're also seeing birth rates starting to decline, and you're going to see a notable slope drop about that, and I'll talk about it a little more.
So you know, you hear that under projection, we're still, we have more kids than we had.
Correct.
We're still bigger than we were. You know, we just know that 100 kids is that half percentage point.
Yeah, not even, yeah. Yeah, so, so we're kind of nitpicking it, but that's an area you always want to watch how many kindergartners are coming in, feeding the system, versus how many seniors typically leaving out the, the other end. So schools, just to give you an idea, with a variance of 10 or more above their projections, Birch Grove was, and currently has maintained 70 kids over the projection. That is a school that, that I cannot explain to you why. I know that the principal there put a lot of time and effort into really trying to sell that within the community and to parents. I think that has paid off a lot. So we're, we're working on those to, to see if we can replicate that in other places, because it's a great win, and he's done a really nice job there. So other schools, Edinburgh is plus 10 or more, Oakview, Rice Lake, Maple Grove Middle, Maple Grove Senior, Osseo Senior, Park Center Senior. So last year, we had like two, and all the rest of them were, were negative. So it's nice to see a trend of, of people growing. And then again, as, as we get better at it, and I get a little more experience, hopefully we'll dial in the projections a little bit closer.
High schools were kind of surprising to me with the context of where we're at with pandemic and everything else. See all three high schools significantly above what we thought. And maybe that's a little bit of some neighboring district stories too, but right from the beginning of the year, we're like, wow, we're, we're a couple hundred over what we thought we were going to have day one, right? And, and we've held on to that. We, you know, we haven't lost that enrollment, even with some of the mobility that we've been challenged by.
And it's interesting to note, so, so last year, both Osseo Senior and Park Center Senior started above projections, but then once we hit the 15-day drop number, they went down significantly. We didn't really see the drop put on that much this year. So as of November 1st, Osseo Senior's 94 kids over projection, Park Center's 119. And that's maintained even since then. Okay. So the next one we're going to look at is this residents attending elsewhere public. So it's important to look at, and again, the, the survey gives us some information, but also, you know, why are kids or families choosing to have their kids attend, attend to other public schools? Right now, open enrollment out of Osseo to other districts is 3,010 students, which increased by 220 students over the previous year. Enrollments into charter schools also increased to just under 3,800, or about 94 kids more than the previous year. Again, it sounds like we're losing kids. We're up in enrollment, but, but there's a reason why kids are choosing elsewhere, so we, we want to be able to dig into that a little bit more. The families that choose public schools of that, we, this next slide takes a look at, at a capture rate. So, so for families who are saying, we're going to choose a public option, 73.5% of those who live within our district choose us as their public option. So that is our resident public school capture rate. For students whose families, if we're looking at our trend here going across the way for the last four years, it's, it's going down slowly, but it is going down, and that is of note. I can see on, on my notes here, going back to the 1718 school year, our capture rate was 76.2 in, in the public sector side. So we are sliding, and, and that's, that's, you know, something that we want to work on from a standpoint of, of marketing to make sure that, and I know Kay's putting together and doing a ton of things on making sure that people understand what programs we have and how successful they are.
And we have neighboring districts having the same conversation.
I was just going to ask, is that like this, is this a local context or a state or a national thing?
At least in the metro, in our neighbors, because I've had this conversation with Superintendent, is their capture rate's down to, people were willing to.
To try.
To try other things, right? So we, the marketing part is where we got to go. We got to like, how do we sell our, what we provide, the things people are looking for with our, because we're competing with our neighbors for that enrollment.
I actually kind of wish we could map it out. You know, I know I live closer to a Robinsdale Elementary School than I do any other ISD 279 school, and I seriously considered open enrolling.
Yeah.
Just because of how it's blocking the sense, so.
It's a great example of, you know, how those jobs have changed.
Yeah.
And, you know, this, the nature of work has changed, right? So maybe we're seeing this follow those life changes that people have with their employment and living, like their housing, all those things that, you know, the kids follow. So we can, I don't think we get that, Thomas, to your point, like we.
Well, there, there are chunks of that we can see now through our, through our enrollment software data and analytics tool that we use for projections and everything else. And you can see right along our district boundaries, there are clusters all along there that have bad experience. I'm actually in the Robinsdale district, but I'm closer to an Osseo elementary school than I am to my kids' elementary school. So we see that along the borders all over with the, with the data points we have.
Okay. So the next slide is going to show you a look of specifically where, where are those students going? This is a four-year summary, so the, the three columns off to the right are just kind of showing you the net gain or loss for the previous years. And then you can see as an example, we lose, this year, 779 kids to Anoka Hennepin, but gained 508 from. Now, some of that is through Northwest Suburban Integrated District, where we're, you know, providing other magnet options that they may have that we don't have, or so on and so forth. So some of those, the asterisk schools on the left kind of highlight where those are. And what we did in the list here is these are, these are all districts that, where we lose at least 60 kids or more to. And I won't go down the list. The other thing, what I, that I would just note is, you know, so we gained from Buffalo, we gained from Minneapolis, although Minneapolis numbers, Minneapolis is always notoriously light in, in getting out their enrollment information, so we don't have their information yet. We had that same problem last year, so as we update, as we get into January, we'll, we'll correct that. And then we gained from Robinsdale. You'll see that the, in the previous years, we were, you know, lost 865, lost 604. Last year, lost 313. Originally, the number was, that we told you last year was a lot higher than that, but it was a miscalculation, because they forgot to include 279 online. And Anthony's team caught that this year and said, hey, whoops, fix your stuff. So we appreciate that. But obviously, with more kids from 279 online going back to traditional schools, it didn't mean they came back to just ours. They also may have gone back to their own, so. Okay. So then the next one is showing charter schools, residents attending charter schools, with again, 60 or more. So Parnassus is easily the largest charter school we lose residents to. Current year, 940 students, which is only up one from the previous year, where we saw some pretty significant increases in the last few years. So that's a win, at least, I think, to us a little bit. The Atholos Leadership Academy had the largest decline. They went down 48 students versus the previous year. And then some others, especially to note, the ones that have declined, Noble Academy and actually the Mung Academy has also gone down.
Do you have charter school attendance at almost 3,000? And here it is 3,800? So where are the other charter schools?
There's, there's a whole bunch more. This is only the list of the top 60.
That's just the top ones, okay.
Or 60 or higher. There's a whole bunch of other.
Okay, now.
This one has 20, this one has 40, this one has 10.
Gotcha.
So, yeah, that, that makes up that, that difference. So we just wanted to highlight the main ones. The next slide I'll have you look at is residents attending elsewhere in private schools, which currently adds up to 2,533 students. This breaks down into two categories, homeschool at 577 students and about 1,959 in private schools. Largest private school where our residents attend is Marinathic Christian Academy at 311 students, which is down 18 from the previous year. Next, St. Vincent de Paul, 271, up 26. I'll just go down a few of them here. Heritage Christian Academy, 249, up 43. Providence Academy, 185, down 3. St. Alphonsus is 66, down 25. That's a pretty notable difference for the size of the number of kids that went there. Ave Maria in Maple Grove, and this is just K8, or pre-K8, 101, up 11. And then a couple of the larger high schools, Totino Grace, 78, down 11. Benilt St. Margaret's, 49, down 14. So hit or miss on some up, some down. Like I said, it's, it's a slight increase, 55 more students this year than last year. The, the slide that has the purple across the top is our overall resident capture rate. So this is kind of that big number of everybody who lives within our district, what percent do we capture to come to our school? So our current percentage is 66.9%. And again, I would point out, this has been steadily declining over time, kind of like as Superintendent McIntyre mentioned before.
There are moments going up that is interesting.
I, I was just kind of wondering, John, thinking about that time of the amount of charters and privates that have come in within that space, so there's a higher saturation of offerings as time goes on as well.
Correct. And that's where you'd hope it would stabilize. So the fact that things are still slightly declining is, is where I would maybe take note or be a little concerned. But again, we, we still have, I think there's another charter school that was either supposed to start this year or starts next year, that falls within our district boundary.
And the, kind of the move back and forth though, because the kind of families deciding to opt in, but then coming back.
Yeah, they try it and go, eh, that didn't work for us, or, or it did, or, or those charter schools last for three years and fail. That happens a lot too. So, so that's, that's some fluctuation, but, but it's, it's trying to keep that number stable or, or obviously growing wherever possible. The kindergarten, resident kindergarten student information. So it's, obviously kindergarten is the most difficult grade to provide an enrollment projection on. Historically, we've used Hennepin County Live Births as an indicator where we would typically capture between 15 and 16% of, of the live births in Hennepin County as our kindergarten students. You can see just a slight decrease in our number at 15.15% for the current year. The next page is resident kindergarten capture rate. Again, kind of following that trend, we're at 59.87% of available kindergartners that we capture. And that again, is also trending down, as you're seeing, if you look over at 2018, 19, you're at 62.3, so we're, we're down 2.5% plus. You know, obviously, the, the, once you can get them at kindergarten, that, that tends to be the hook, so you want to be able to keep them from there. Questions on any of the historical stuff before we move into the enrollment projection? Okay. So the next page you have is the draft enrollment projection for the fiscal '24 through '28 school years. All the trend information that we've been discussing is used to create the five-year enrollment projections. And as Anthony had mentioned, we actually have a new predictive enrollment analytics tool, that they also help and provide us a 10-year enrollment projection that takes into account all of the new housing developments that they, typically, they will have conversations with the city planning commissions and developers to try to put account to, this is how many houses we think are going to go here, there, or, or where the, the developments are, and they map those out. Now, all their housing starts mapped in the first five years, and then they're just projecting the, the last five just as information for us. But this is our first year using that, so we're kind of doing both side by side and comparing at this point. But, so the orange highlighted area is the projection for next year, and the yellow is the following four years based on the trends. Historical data shows last few years that we talked about. The big thing to note that you'll see is the 2020 birth year for kindergarten for the Hennepin County Live Births will be in fiscal FY '26. So the second yellow column, that dropped, that's a 50-year low number. So we, we're expecting to drop at least 200 kids in kindergarten just because of that. So, so obviously, going into that, whatever we can do to try to capture more kindergartners will be to our benefit, because the, the pot is going to be a little bit smaller. The bottom lines cross, we're predicting 392 new students for next year, 264 in fiscal '25, and then we start to sleep, see a bit of a decline based on what we know today, and that's where that enrollment, or that kindergarten decline really comes into play. So without those 200-plus kids, we'd still be slightly positive for the next year or so. The trend lines through the '26, '27, whoops, actually goes to '27, '28, which is fine. So the, the information on your left is our current lines for elementary and secondary, and then the projections on the right. This, the growth data here is an important item that ECMAC especially uses to make recommendations about capacity needs and opportunities in coming years. The information that the enrollment analytics organization used, which they gathered in August, accounted for 2,494 new housing units currently in process for the next five years. Since then, we are aware of just about 1,500 additional coming, and I just got an email earlier today about another development that's coming, potentially coming online. So when we do our projections, and I know we didn't have that information, I added it, so the projections that are in front of you include that 1,500, because we knew about it prior to finishing this. So we will be actually presenting all this information to ECMAC this coming Monday. So next steps, we will finalize the grade and site-level enrollment projections, update all that information, continue to use data to inform the ECMAC committee, and then class size informations and, and trends, you know, so that information gets provided to DLTL, who will take the enrollment pieces and then matriculate that into a staffing projection, which will then, you can kind of create class size based on, on counts at that point. So that's the information so far. I believe we're still planning to do, you know, we, we're always studying where our class sizes fall compared to those around us, and so we just keep participating in that study, so we at least have that data on a regular basis, and hope to have that. I think that doesn't come up till like March or April though.
Yeah, and this, this I add towards, John was saying, you know, there's a few things can really impact our enrollment. So passing Phase 1 of Building a Better Future is a positive impact on enrollment. Had that failed, and, and some of the cuts came, and especially if it couldn't renew, we would have seen a pretty, on a lot of levels, negative impact. But we're, we're one of the main reasons people stay with us or come to us like that. That's in every survey. It's the quality of our teachers and staff, so if we're cutting those qualities out, that doesn't make good things. Phase 2 can also have a positive impact on our enrollment in the sense that, you've already studied Career Tech yet, right? But when we talk a little bit broader on programs, services, even the facilities, when we talk about 21st century learning spaces, and you see like the Rice Lake example, those things draw, keep, keep enrollment strong. So workforce, all those things that we're focused on, and you're going to get a little more detail on some of the impacts of this on the 12. We do the smaller groups, Phase 2, preparing you for that. And then, and then in January, you'll get our one topic on that work session in January is Building a Better Future Phase 2 study group work that you haven't seen yet. So you've seen Career Tech, and a couple others. We're going to follow up with that, because that turns into between now and the end of the spring, where the board wants to go with the potential for any facility growth needs or improvements, as you make decisions about what, what do we want to pursue. So passing Phase 1 isn't lost on me, on the impact it has on enrollment. Can our ability to staff and hire quality staff, but so many people come to us for. I will send you again that parent choice survey, because it does give you a number of reasons, you know. I, I think the big theme is there's a lot of choices, where, and, and people are more mobile than ever before. So we need to, hey, John, I've been talking about how do we market even harder? How do we sell and promote our district even more in different ways? And so we've been kicking around some ideas, but that might be a, you know, we, we may want to even consider adding a position to just solely be marketing our, our district, because it's hard for everyone around the table to do that on top of everything else. And I think where it repays us is if enrollment goes up, that's how you pay for that, right? That's, those dollars coming in through enrollment. So we're trying to think innovatively around this, based on where we're at in this point in time, so that we can continue to compete with other public, other private, other charters, right? Because people are more than ever willing to go do different things. So we, we really have to continue to put ourselves out there. Tonya, like I you said it before, you know, the strategy and model we use for the referendum, there's some key strategy there that we can apply to enrollment, or some other. there that we can apply to enrollment or some other things, right, as far as how we put a plan together. Questions?
Do we have, what is the expectation for capacity for 279 online? You know, it seems like enrollment's naturally going to drop as more people are more comfortable being a person, but we also have the capacity that can anywhere in the state. And so is that part of the plan too, in terms of expanding enrollment, is to keep that moving along?
I can dovetail some of the pieces on that. So, you know, we ramped up over the summer and contracted with CISO to put a whole marketing campaign together. Some of the aspects started to get put together and pushed out through social media avenues, Google, web advertising. So it's, you know, we saw some good numbers come back with the engagements in the advertisement. We haven't necessarily seen that translate into the actual enrollment capacities yet, but there's foundational stuff started for how we continue to look at that and market it as a statewide program and differentiate our online programming from what other online programs actually have to offer.
That's great, people.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm not sure why it's statewide online. I don't know what's down.
Yeah, I think, you know, for us, is trying to understand where is that stabilized population? When I, you know, from what I've heard in other districts of similar size that have had previous online programs, 300 to 400 was kind of where they were operating before the pandemic. The fact that we have around 500, we're still on a little bit more of a leading edge compared to where some other programs may have been at. But it's trying to understand where is that sweet spot capacity and then how we can grow that. The dovetailed aspect is the other, the other, you know, Phase 3 of 279 online that we're working on right now, which is in supplemental online enrollment. So students can come and take a course, two courses, three courses. Those are more of the traditional programs you hear of like Minnetoka Online, Eden Prairie Online. Even though they do offer full-time, a lot of students participating are just taking one or two courses within those online spaces. Next year, we're going to start small to get it organized and really target and recapture our students who are leaving and going to Northern Star Online to keep that enrollment capacity in. And then we can talk about expanding and what does that look like for broader marketing and enrollment outside of Osteo area schools as we build the capacity of that supplemental portion of the programming.
Are we marketing like unique pieces? I'm just thinking like the Mung Language and Heritage Program as something that's unique to us only online. Are we trying to like target any marketing towards that or?
I can grab that one. So Anthony and I co-lead on this one, and we're working with Kay and a new communications consultant to take the work that CISO had provided for us because they really nailed the brand promise and the brand marketing. They really did a beautiful job of that, but the execution of that into a solid marketing plan and to be able to continue to capture over and over again those, the uniqueness and how, Anthony said, we're trying to differentiate ourselves from other online schools. And we do. We have a very innovative and unique program experience. So we are working with a consultant to capture the design of that and to capture all those unique stories. So we hope to have that coming out when folks start to look at the enrollment, the new enrollment window starting in January. So we're trying to have that positioned for the start of the new calendar year as families start to look and shop.
Yeah, I'm excited for the individual class option because I think that's a good hook, right? They come take this particular class because it's something unique to us, and then they find out how wonderful we are, right?
Yeah. That Wednesday flex, what I need, the enrichment aspect of it, and having all that choice and autonomy. I mean, it's unlike anything else we offer in the district.
And the supplemental spaces is interesting because when you do a comprehensive online enrollment, you're enrolling in that district in that program. Or when you do supplemental, I'm going to pick on Minnetoka, but if I'm a Minnetoka student and I want to take, I still want to graduate with a Minnetoka diploma, I can take three of my courses online through 279 online, and it just counts towards my Minnetoka diploma because that's how supplemental online learning works in this state. So, you know, there is some pride with some individuals in whatever school district they're enrolled in to continue to have that diploma stamp with that, even though they're looking for the online supplemental opportunities to pair with what they're doing in person or, you know, sometimes with PSCO splits. So, you know, I have a PSCO split half the time, and I want to take the other half of the classes in an online space to create great flexibility in my schedule. They're looking for programs that will deliver that option, which is what we desire to get to that state.
So kids can sort of then design their own hybrid schedule, right, to balance out how much they want in person with virtual or asynchronous. So, yeah, it's giving them a lot more flexibility.
And state statute allows for any student to take up to 50% of their coursework online. And you can't prevent it. Families have that right through statute.
One quick note on overall enrollment discussion. What we didn't touch on tonight that I'm assuming we will be thinking about going forward is the undercapacity concerns. And again, you did talk about the growth and the pressure that's going to put in and just the geographic realities with kind of the business corridor in the middle of our district. So I know ECMAC is going to be spending some time studying undercapacity, but really, it's going to be more of the programmatic question to drive a change to pulling students to those.
You may remember some informal conversations we had last spring about some of that could start to show in Phase 2 planning. So there's some hard facility needs, and then there's, I think we could add some of those, maybe opportunities that come around undercapacity in the district as well, so that we can do some things with Phase 2 in every part of the district. So there's some things that are positive that we're potentially asking for across the system. So that's a great point, is those are real as well.
So do we have a good representation at ECMAC from more of the undercapacity schools?
Do we have a good representation? Not as good as it should be.
That's why, you know, you kind of, it's kind of a concern if like, you know, you have this conversation. I think we're always looking to bring more people in just to make sure that that conversation is.
It's not too late to recruit more people.
Say it again, Heather. Not too late.
There are a lot of opportunities. It's never too late.
But that's a really good point. Like, if we're noticing that there are specific schools that are important in this conversation that are in undercapacity that aren't being represented in that discussion, that maybe we coordinate with their site leaders to specifically recruit parents and from those sites so that their voices be heard. Because a lot of times, I feel like people just get so much content from us. They're just like, I don't have time for this right now. But they might actually, kind of, if someone reaches up to them personally. The other thing I wanted to say is, I really like the direction of the conversation, the things that you were talking about, where we're going with this. Because ultimately, what we're looking at is we're losing significantly more students than what we're bringing in. And our goal is to retain all of our students, but also bring in those other students, right? So obviously, we wouldn't be able to handle if that just happened. That would be a real challenge for us space-wise and capacity-wise and all that. But it would be ideal if we were able to be the district where everyone said, this is where I want to be. I want to stay in my home district. And so we need to keep working towards that. So I really like a lot of the things that you were talking about, Corey, and the questions that were being asked and talked about, especially with the online learning. One thing that I would like to see is how can we influence other agencies when it comes to the online programming? Anthony, you and I have talked about this before. A big reason why a lot of people choose not to do online, even if it would be the better learning style, is because they live too far away and they won't be able to participate in activities at the site. And so making sure that we have, and we've talked about this, but just for everybody else, opportunities for students to get engaged and feel really part of the community and highlighting that in our advertisement piece. I really like what you said about marketing because I think that's really a point where we aren't very successful yet in our marketing of our schools and our districts and what we have to offer. So I would really like to see more of that marketing and using a lot of the techniques that you already used in our campaign. I think they were really effective. But we want to be the district that everybody goes to, that everyone's talking about, the best of the best. And so making sure that we really continue to amplify those voices and the things that we have, like Jackie was saying with the Mung program. I didn't even know that we were the only one that had that. So, you know what I mean? Like, that's a really huge drawing point, and I didn't even know that. So that makes me think that a lot of people who are looking at us probably don't know that either, right? So I just really wanted to just emphasize those points that I really think that we have a lot of work to do, but we're on the right track. So I'm excited about it, but...
Yeah, the unique thing Heather and I were talking about is that, you know, and it actually goes back to our monitoring, important thinking about students and connectedness. And so 279 online has done a great job of creating clubs and opportunities for spaces for students to connect. But when you talk about those in-person extracurriculars, it's tied to the district you're enrolled with. So if I'm a student in 279 online and I live in St. Cloud, in order to participate in sports, I have to come down here to do that because that's the way the statute in Minnesota State High School League works. Current structures, thinking about pre, you know, online space days.
One quick last point to what Director Douglas said about the resident capture rate. If we consider the number of votes that the technology levy passed by in a decline in resident capture, if we lose a few hundred more residents, what could that mean for referendum passages? So that was something I thought of as a way through it. So it is critical to continue to maintain that resident capture rate.
Yeah, for those that, I love the questions around that because it's like, I'd love to know more about how many are losing just simply because their parents are not working somewhere. It's a, you know what I mean? Versus, they could be with us, just aren't choosing to, versus it's really not as possible because of their, like, their climate or their housing has changed, right? So I'm always curious on how we dig in and find where are the students we really have a shot at versus the ones that are going, maybe going somewhere else because there's a lot of good reasons for it. Or come to us for the same reason. Maybe they're working in our district, so they're coming to our school because they come from a different family or something like that. So.
Are we looking at the things like Friendly? It was 145 at Friendly.
Yeah, what's going on there?
What's going on there? I mean, not that Friendly's not awesome, but it's not like next door. You know what I mean? It's not like, oh, it's right there. So that's what I'm, you know, trying to figure that out.
We haven't talked about Northwest Suburban in quite a while. We're still the biggest gainer. We're the biggest client, right, so to speak, of the Northwest Suburban partnership. So we're the biggest miner, I guess, on the standpoint of that area. Even though we got capacity at St. Wood and some others. That was impacted too, though. That was a pretty big impact.
But I think that's why the Building a Better Future Phase 2 is like so critical because it's like the exciting phase. It's like the what, like, what are the working projects? What are the magic? Really, that sense of pride, like, what's going to draw people? You know? And I think that's what people are.
Yeah, let's get there. Especially with like the special options, like we were talking about in January, the languages and the tech, and the things that people will go to a different school for when they really want those. And I don't think we're quite there yet with the languages, but we're getting there with the tech.
Hopefully do some programming around conversion or other things, work through a really good process to be involving a lot of our community members and being a part of what those decisions are. Well, if you have other, I'll send the parent choice survey. So that's my one to do, and my second to do is to do that project book. I'll get that ordered as well. If you have additional questions on enrollment, please let John know or others, because sometimes you do think you're really selling for the next day, or I wish I would have thought and asked at the meeting. Please don't hesitate to ask and follow up on that. I'm just going to do a quick highlight of some of the calendar things coming up for the board before we wrap up this evening. So our, next week's meeting is a big one. It always is every December. So we have our student board reports, but we do have board recognitions. One of them is a very large football team, first time ever state champs, and, you know, I think they had 60 seniors. So we have a lot of kids from that building. And there's some other teams that did really well that are going to be recognized. And so that'll take some time. But it's time well spent, right? It's really good things. You'll get an abbreviated version of monitoring report D. You'll vote on legislative platform. You'll also, not they'll be lost, and all this, the final truth and taxation levy as well. So, and then you will have a contract gratification to approve as well as from the roll and that work forward. Then in the January, our work session item on the time is just Building a Better Future Phase 2. We need to give that the time it deserves. And I wonder over time, when we put two or three other things on there, it doesn't fall as well. So your organizational meeting is that night as well. Now, you've been working together on those items. If you look out a little further, monitoring report sees in February. It's going to be here before you know it. Okay? So I didn't mean to bring it up. I don't want to.
Actually, that one's going to be really straightforward. That's probably our.
You'll have your budget on this as well. If you look out a bit further, where, you know, you're going to get work on bridge lines updates, we'll have a district communication plan updates, some of the pretty big items coming your way, along with, you know, Phase 2 is going to be at the center of our work through the spring, along with those monitoring reports. You got monitoring report B in April and then A in June. So every other month, that's about, that's about as fast as we can move, honestly, in building out so far. So that's just a quick look at the big things that are coming. Tentative PD session, boarding cabinet together on January 31st. And we have tentatively locked in Henberg Golf Stadium like we did in the summer. So they might do that twice a year. It was a good facility. Did a nice job hosting us. It's going to be a good environment for the PD work we need to do together. So with that, unless there's questions, actually, you might get out a little early.
All right. Work session ended at 8:19?
Thanks.
Thank you.